All right, I have 5:30. We'll call the meeting to an end if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you to everyone who is here tonight. Thank you to anyone who is online. And before we get to communication from parent staff and district residents, I will...
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Dr. Miller from tonight's meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Micah, Patty, if you can do the roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we will move to communications from parent staff and district residents. The Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community at regular board business meetings. The Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communication from parent staff and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the board to listen to comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and to learn. Please know that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with a speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Finally, please remember that your words have impact and you, not the school district, are responsible for those words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you're unsure of the legal effects of your remarks, you should seek independent legal advice. In any case, we ask that you help model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks and sounds like. Guidelines to address the board. When the board president calls your name, please come to the podium at the front of the room. You'll have two minutes to address the board. A stoplight on the screen will let you know when to begin, when you have a minute remaining, and when your time has ended. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. Do we have any online? One? Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's start with that person. Hello, are you there, Deanna?
Yeah.
All right, it's your turn. You can go in. Ready?
Hi there. My name is Deanna Winterrose, and I am the parent coalition coordinator for Benton and Franklin Counties. I am here tonight to speak with the board about special education and some of the needs that we're hearing from our families. One of the ongoing needs that we have is... Am I being heard? Sorry.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. One of the needs that our families have is that of well-trained staff.
Are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still with you. Sorry.
Okay.
One of the needs we have is well-trained staff. And those would be staff who would be ongoing supportive education in behavioral and de-escalation training. This is so essential for our loved ones to be able to stay in school because if those behaviors aren't managed adequately, it removes them from the educational setting. This is something we hear from all of our parents who have children in special education. And I just wanted to come in tonight and ask for the board to please consider providing additional training for your staff and your professionals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Oh, we're good. The light's off. Okay. All right, next up, Nikki Zimmerman.
You can even hold it.
That'll be okay, I think.
We're ready.
Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay.
Dr. Pearson, board members. My name is Nikki Zimmerman, and I'm the parent of two children at Kennewick School District. One, who is in your Tier Three autism program. Due to safety concerns, I recently met with a different school for a new placement for my child. And upon meeting this school, I was told that the motto here was "All Means All." What a relief, I thought. Maybe we'd finally found a place for my son to belong. Turns out, all only means all unless you are my child. Some members of that administrative team had made up their mind about my child before they'd even ever met him. Students like my son are consistently having to prove here that they are worthy of an education when in reality they are legally entitled to one through the mandated laws of our country. This district seems to have forgotten that our special education students are general education students first. The students I speak of do receive state and federal funding, but they also fall under the general population, and yet the decisions being made almost never serve them directly. I don't know where the funding goes, but I can tell you that I do know where it doesn't. It's not here to provide adequate training and ongoing implementation of that training to our sped teachers or paraeducators. Trainings that would ensure their safety and success, as well as safety and success to the students that they serve. It isn't being used to provide adequate professional development to gen ed teachers who are expected to support and provide instruction to our students on IEPs. It isn't being put into building accessible buildings with accommodations of our students in mind. And it certainly isn't being utilized, as I learned, to train school administrators on how to create an inclusive environment for all students with all disabilities. You have really passionate and hard-working sped teachers, paraeducators, and special service administrators or employees in this district who were burning out due to lack of support. They stay because they love our kids and they believe in them, but like some before them, they will eventually leave too if things don't change. One in 36 children is being diagnosed with autism, and the numbers are rising quickly. This district has gained a reputation of being reactive. I implore this district and the board to visit our sped classrooms. Think of how you're choosing to not only allocate, but also distribute these funds. The structure currently operating is that our kids are treated as a separate group within the walls of their own schools. And a cultural shift has to take place immediately, and it has to start with the people in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Let's see. Next up, Chuck Henninger.
Thank you. I'm Chuck Henninger, a Kennewick resident. And there was an interesting article in the Tri-City Herald that sparked my interest in student achievement. As a retired scientist, I have some issues or some, just some interest in that. And what caught my eye was that said, "The share of Tri-City students exceeding state standardized testing hasn't changed much since last year." We know that COVID affected a lot of things. A sign that recovery from pandemic-era learning loss may be slowing. Tri-City schools have caught up about halfway to 2019 scores, but there's still improvement to be made. This is evident when comparing the percent of students on track for college-level learning in math and English between 2019 and 2024. Richland remains about nine points behind in both subjects. Kennewick is behind by 10 points in English and nine points in math. And while Pasco is behind by seven points in English and eight points in math. And I think that just underscores the fact that there's some issues with recovering from the pandemic level issues. But also, what caught my eye is, there was a later in the article that says, "Here's how many students in each school district were on track for college classes without needing remedial learning." And I was surprised to see that out of the local school districts, only Richland was right about at the state average. And Kennewick was below the state average. And although Kennewick was much better than more of the, many of the surrounding school districts. And you have to note that Washington as a whole does well nationally. But there's a concern from what I'm saying. Also, just curious as to why Kennewick School District is below the state average in English, math, and science. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Let's see. Next up, Alicia McKenzie.
Hi, Ellen. Thank you for your time. My name's Alicia McKenzie. I have a daughter who is a sophomore in Kennewick School District, and she's also autistic. And as Nikki said, one in 36 kids in the country or in the world is being diagnosed with autism. Now imagine being in your classroom and being a 15-year-old kid. And every day you walk in, you sit down, and you are expected to write the letter Z every day. Now, you've been going to school for 10, 12, 13 years, depending on how young you started, and you're still being expected to write the letter Z. You've known your alphabet since you were three. That kind of educational or lack of educational curriculum is really causing a disservice to not just our kids, but all other kids that are in your special education program. And there really is an opportunity right now to look at our kids as if they are age-appropriate. Assume that they are capable of all of the other education that the rest of the kids in the school are. As Nikki said, we're general education kids first, who need some special support in order to be as successful as their neurotypical peers. And that's just something I'd like you guys to think about. Absolutely, we need to train everybody a lot better. Not just our sped program administrators, but also our general ed teachers. So that when kiddos like my daughter walk in and they bounce a little bit, or they squeal, or they get really excited, the kids that are already in the classroom have experienced a kid a moment. And then later on in life, or maybe when they go to the restaurant next week and they say they see a kid having a moment. It's just a moment, and it's not necessarily a time to give them a dirty look. And we could really change the way that people experience our kids and the rest of the world around them if we start now. And if we're a little bit more inclusive and a lot more understanding, and we give people the benefit of their intelligence. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Next, is it Casey?
Good afternoon. I live here in Kennewick. My neighborhood borders Washington Elementary School and the canal that's adjacent to your property. And I have come to understand that the bridge connecting our neighborhood to the school property is going to be removed. I don't know if this is true, but I think that that bridge gives access to at least 30 to 40 people each and every day. Our neighborhood is safe. People drop their kids off there in cars and pick them up so that they don't have to go into the school property, which is very congested in the mornings, as you know. A lot of kids in our neighborhood walk and cross there and can get back home without the safety issues of walking along 20th Avenue and then walking to Washington Street, which are very busy, as you all know. It just raises a concern that I think that our money, if it is a safety issue, that bridge can be fixed or repaired. But I walk it all the time, and it is a very, very good structure. And I don't see any reason why this bridge should be taken down. I think it's a bigger safety issue that our kids walk along busy corridors to get to school rather than have the safety net of a safe neighborhood to access their school grounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Next up, we have Paul.
My name's Paul. I'm a resident here, same as Casey. We're talking about the same thing, so I won't go over everything he said. That safety of our children is first and foremost. And I've been trying to get that bridge, just the rails fixed on it, since 2021, to no avail. Now, one of the parents here the other day said, "Well, I can fix that." And so we started putting up new handrails, but was told, "If you don't cease and desist, we'll have you arrested by Columbia Irrigation District." And I want to see my kids walking down 19th and going up Garfield or up Washington. Along with the safety, I've also been trying to get those trees cut down that are right on the other side of the ditch, or the old diseased walnut trees that are dropping limbs, like, not little limbs, I'm talking big limbs. And they could hit our kids at any time. And that's just as bad as any other kind of danger that could happen in that school. So I'd like to see something taken care of. I've already called a reporter, and she's digging into it. But KID or CID said, "Well, we haven't got time for you right now." So if you guys could push on your end, maybe get something done, that would be awesome. That's really all I got to say, but safety is first. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right. That concludes communication from parent staff and district residents. I will move to consent items, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mike, Patty, if you will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Gledhill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Moving right along, communication follow-up. And we will start with Dr. Pierce.
Great. Thank you. So I don't have any items to follow up on from last meeting, but I do want to assure the people who commented this evening that I will be meeting with my team on concerns that were raised tonight, and then I can follow back up at the next board meeting. I did want, I do have a little information on the concerns raised about the bridges over the canals. And so I just, I don't have anything too concrete to share other than to say we are in communication with both CID and KID, both those two irrigation districts about structures that are in place. And so we're aware of the concerns, we're aware of the situation, and in dialogue with those agencies. So hopefully I can maybe have more to share at our next board meeting.
Great. Thank you. So we will jump right into superintendent and board member reports. And so we will start at the end there with Annie.
Hello, everybody. So today Nutrition Services visited us during lunch. We had enchiladas and nachos. It was really, really good. They were interested in hearing about what we thought of our individual schools lunches, and they were interested in our feedback on what they could potentially do to improve on. Most students brought up the lack of water accessibility in some of their schools with the common factor being, "Why don't we have water bottles at lunchtime served as with the milk?" More schools like Kennewick and Southridge brought up that most schools have had problems with the water fountains being broken often. So they were wondering if we could have water during lunch. That was it.
Water during lunch. Right. All right.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah. And I'll add a little bit to what Annie shared. So of course, that was, this was at the Superintendent Student Advisory Council today that Nutrition Services came. And as Annie said, one of the things that, you know, they serve milk, of course, because that's part of the meal that is, they're required to serve with USDA regulations, all of those kind of things. As a district, we provide water, access to water at our drinking fountains. And we also have water bottle fillers as part of our drinking fountains. And so I think the concern that got raised was sometimes the filters, apparently there's a filter light. And sometimes the filter lights are red, so it looks like the, it's not that it's not working, but that the filter light looks like it needs to be changed. Yeah. And then also that just because of passing time and, you know, just the amount of students in the halls, sometimes it's hard, if they have the water bottle, to get to the water bottle filler. And then a couple of students shared that not all students have a refillable water bottle. And so we actually said, you know, it's not so much a Nutrition Services piece as more of a district and school piece for us to look at. So we're going to add that water discussion to our next month's agenda and just dig a little bit deeper to see if we can, we can address some of the things that were raised by students. But I just want to assure you, students do have access to water. And the only other thing I wanted to share in terms of my report, you want me to go next?
Yes.
Okay, let's keep going. I had some great school visits over the past couple of weeks to Southridge, Sagecrest, Eastgate, Highlands, Southgate, and Lincoln. And so I, like many board members, am kind of making my way through my fall school visits. We hosted a legislative tour, but I'm going to, I think Representative Gledhill will probably want to share about that.
Sure.
So I won't. Well, I'll let you share. But that was great. And then I, also, Mr. Connors and I had a brief conversation about workforce development, workplace learning. And so we've incorporated some of that topic into tonight's college and career readiness presentation around CTE. But I do, and I'll give the handouts out when we get to that part of the presentation because I brought some of what's currently in place around those restrictions. And then Paul Randall, the TRITech Director, let me know that there's going to be, Representative Connors is going to host a workforce development group over at, a work group over at TRITech coming up to really talk about looking at the laws and rules to enhance employability of 16 and 17-year-olds. So I just wanted to kind of tee that up because it is connected to what we're talking about tonight. And I have a couple other handouts that I can provide.
No, that's great. Great information.
Thank you very much. Mike, we'll start down there with you.
Well, I haven't had a chance to get my school visit started yet, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks I'll get that moving. But yeah, just really lots of conversations, you know, as the legislators coming into, coming into session here pretty quick. Lots of stuff on the board. Brittany's going to be very busy with all the legislative craziness that will be coming her way.
It just changes so fast.
It's like three years.
I know.
Cool. That's it, Mike?
That's it.
Okay. Brittany, you're up.
Yeah, I've got to pull up my cheat sheet that shows me what I was doing. So I was able to get out to some schools this last week. I went to Amistad and visited with Mr. Blanco there, had a great conversation with him. I really, really love that our schools are data-focused. And so just had a chance to check in with him. I'd met with him. He was one of the first principals I met with in the spring, last spring. And he had a lot of information for me about their STAR data and walked me through how he evaluates each teacher and those performances. And so this time around, we looked specifically at their math fax tests. And I don't have the language exactly right, but it was fun to see how they are monitoring the progress of their students. And just love seeing that very focused look on the data. And then after that visit, went on the legislative tour with Dr. Pierce and a handful of people. We had people from OSPI. We had someone from the Architectural Board that was there. And then, of course, Senator Matt Benke was there with us as well. And so we went and did a tour first of Ridgeview Elementary, and the intention was to see a newly-built elementary that was paid for by bond money. And it's a partnership with our local community as well as state funding. And so it was really nice to be there and to see Ridgeview and see what a wonderful facility it is now. It's a modern facility. It's designed to meet the needs of modern education. It was personally a good, a pleasant experience for me. That was my children's homeschool, home elementary. So it's fun to be back there with Mrs. Puckett again and just to see how things have changed. And then we immediately went from that tour over to Hawthorne Elementary, which is second, maybe third on our list of schools that need some attention. And so just to see the contrast there of how Hawthorne, it was built, I think Senator Benke said that was his elementary school. So it's seen a lot. And just some of the things, Angela does a great job there of working within the constraints of the way the building is set up. But, you know, their gym space is also, their cafeteria space. And they, some of their bathrooms are far away from some of the play and education space. So there's just some things that need to be updated for sure. So it was good to be there and to have conversations, particularly ahead of when we're going to be talking about bonds and levies coming up in the near future. So it was a great visit to have that awareness in mind. And then the other thing is I really enjoyed prepping for tonight's meeting. I loved seeing the school improvement plans and the consent agenda items. They are, it's an impressive effort by each of our schools. And I don't know if this has been done before, or maybe if I'm the only one interested in it, but I would love some sort of a board presentation, or just maybe even in your weekly write-ups to us, just some more information about, you know, I have the list of the people who work on the school improvement plan from each school. But I'm curious to know, you know, the time that is spent putting that plan together. And particularly interested in knowing who from the district administration is overseeing these plans? How often are we checking in with the schools to see what progress they're making along that way? Just, yeah, I'd love some information on that, how we use them throughout the year.
Great.
So, yeah.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Perfect. Mike, you're up.
Okay. I had, I would say, two excellent visits this last little bit here. Visited Southridge High School, spent about two and a half hours with John Griffith, the principal there. Talked about a lot of different things and a lot of different options and things that he's doing and visions he has. And we got to know each other on a personal basis a little bit. And that's actually one of my goals. I always want to be able to have a relationship with every principal so that if I was ever, were ever to see him in public or something, or around town or something, that we could just talk like we're buddies, and that's kind of one of my goals. So I feel like we're there. And anyway, it was a great visit. I won't go into all the details. I had another visit with Casey again at Desert Hills, very similar. We, I think we were, we had about, it was about an hour and a half. And it was great. We learned a lot about each other. And also we had his vision and some of the things he's done, and won't go into all the details. Also, just around the district, a lot of games and activities and things that our kids have, and that's great to see. And then just, finally, just based on, just a general thought, based on everything that's in this meeting and things that was in the, you guys may see that I hesitated a little slightly on the, on the consent items. I don't know why I could think of that. Just as a district, I just really want us to be a district that focuses on excellence. We have a commitment to excellence. Just, it's a slight paradigm shift that, a commitment to excellence rather than a commitment to equity and DEI. I just want to have that. It's not that I, it's like, we want every kid to have everything, right? And so just like looking at little Johnny and saying, "Little Johnny, we're going to hold you to an incredibly high standard." One of the speakers said, "Assume that they are capable." That is, I love that. And that's what I wanted. I want to assume every single kid is capable of doing great things and have that commitment to excellence, and that's really the focus. It's a slight shift from commitment to DEI, commitment to equity. It's a, it's a slight shift from commitment to DEI, commitment to, to equity. And it's not that we're not giving that kid extra. It is, we are giving that extra, but we're giving that kid extra for because we believe in them, because we expect them to be excellent. And that's the reason. So slight, just a slight fundamental paradigm shift. That's my vision that I, that I hope that we can achieve. With that, you have my time.
Thank you. Micah, I honestly, just a handful of phone calls from different community members, different questions. And I'll be obviously communicating with Dr. Pierce quite a bit. Other than that, that's all I got. So we will move forward to reports and discussions, and Mr. Vic Roberts will kick us off with our enrollment update.
All right, thanks. So our first enrollment update, you know, normally we have that about every October, kind of go over the numbers, do a few projections with that, and see where we're going to end up. So just some accountability, and this won't be the last enrollment update you'll get during the year, but it will be the first. So enrollment, you know, there's headcount, FTE, there's the budget, there's projected, and there's the actual. So there's a lot of different things going on here. This one here is just headcount. So when, when people say we have 19,000, you know, 500 students or, or, you know, close to that, that's where this number comes from. And you can see elementary, you know, holding pretty good here from, from last October to this October, and so on down here. Not, not a lot of bad news there. Running Star, Open Doors, those programs are growing. Open Doors is a re-engagement program for kids that get their diploma. Offsite at CBC and EST. And I think it's a GED program also, but they only go to school maybe two or three times a week, and a lot of tutoring with those programs. And on to the FTE, so not headcount here, student FTE, so this is how we get paid, based on full-time equivalent. And you see elementary, pretty good numbers. We really didn't drop off from last October, which is good news. And that's primarily because our kindergarten numbers were up from last year, and our first grade came in a little higher. So that kind of was good news there. You can see the MCP numbers increase a little bit there. So, so generally good. We're still a little behind here from, from past years, but we did not drop off as much as expected, so that's good news. And same pretty much goes for middle school, holding steady here. And even down here, just a little bit of an increase. And generally, these middle school numbers stay about the same throughout the year. We're paid based on 10-month average. So this is just the October 1st numbers. We have September, October, but this is just taken October 1st. And that's usually our highest month of enrollment is October.
Can I ask you a quick, so if, if, if you're asked, so based on the headcount that you showed, the 19,336, so it looks like we're back in line with headcount from pre-COVID numbers, right?
Pretty similar, right.
And then FTE is pretty close as well, right? Is what it looks like?
Yeah, you'd have to look down here before the, the programs, but it's still pretty close. You know, 1845 to 18319, it's not, we're probably doing better than a lot of districts, you know, trying to not lose as much crap. So in the high school here, we've been, you know, doing fairly well, not losing a lot of kids there. And down here, the CTE program has been increasing. You see 99 versus 973. The ag programs are, have a better enrollment, from what I can hear at high school, Kamaiakans, Haldur, Danke.
If we're asking questions now, I mean, before we get too far down, I was going to ask you to go back to the top anyway. So, so it's like, our, our elementary numbers are obviously dropping. I assume we're going to say that's because of birth rate. I assume that's the assumption, right? Where our high school numbers seem to be actually improving. And, I mean, I have, I have my own theory. I just wondered what you think. Why would, why do you think the high school numbers are, are slightly improving where, when, you know, it's like, elementary is going one direction, high school is going the other direction, you know, and net, net seems to be roughly the same, right, as, as pre-COVID or a little less, but.
Yeah, the high school numbers have been surprising that they've held pretty steady.
They've increased.
After these, these years, years 2021, 20, I think you had a lot of kids that weren't really going to school and maybe came back, and Dr. Pierce can chime in. Out here in these other, other years, it could be some of the other programs where, you know, kids aren't going to our school, they're going somewhere else. They don't have as much to offer, and maybe they're, they're coming back here a little bit.
Yeah, I'm wondering if like some of the messaging that we're doing, some of the policies are, are actually encouraging those families and high school kids to, I'm hearing that a little bit. I'm wondering if you're hearing that, that, that some of those kids are coming.
The high school and, and you know, middle school, probably you're, maybe you're in Orso there. I think maybe it's starting to happen at the elementary because you do have kindergarten, first grade up. So you're probably out more in tune with the public than I am on some of that stuff.
And, and just a reminder, we're in the process, right, of having that enrollment study done. So that is underway. I, I, you know, we're in contact with them regularly. They're, they're, they're convening, they've done a reach out. I'm trying to remember what stage they're at. They've reached out to, to invite people to participate in the focus groups. So that's kind of where that is in, in process. So we should know more once we get that.
Yeah, of course.
I think the messaging, you know, the past couple of years from the board has, has been positive about our schools and everything. Hopefully that is, they can make some impact. Going down here to some other, there's Endeavor and Legacy, so these probably, they're a little bit below last year. There's a little more focus to try to get kids in there that will succeed, you know, and really kind of target and make that a more successful program. So that could be part of that. But generally, these numbers probably go up a little bit, I would expect, maybe. You know, as kids kind of find their way to high school, maybe get to those programs. And then down here, TRITech, some good increases there. So, you know, up considerably, and that's, I don't think it's any particular program. I think it's all the programs out there that have been doing well.
The capacity's bigger, too.
And then here's that Open Doors, the re-engagement programs for, for students, which is good. We have Milka here on our staff that gets kids into that program, does a great job.
That's great to see. That's, that's super awesome.
And then down here, MCP again, some good numbers there. You know, ever since after COVID, that, that program took off, and it's still, still doing very well. Online here down here, not quite as many, but you're getting some more of those kids back, whether it's MCP, homeschool, or back up in the elementary. So any questions there? That's just a snapshot of the Octobers from the past, you know, four or five years. Then moving on, we wanted to touch on the, the boundary kind of impact that we did with the boundaries. So we paid that money. I wish this green color would show up more. I don't think we did the projectors. Yeah, green's supposed to mean good, you know, more money, red nod, but. So this, the schools we were trying to move kids from, the green ones we were trying to increase, so you can see Ammon Creek, pretty successful there. Hawthorne and Sagecrest. So all those kids got dispersed into these other schools where it's green and did pretty well there. Canyon View was actually one of the schools also that was impacted by the boundary change. However, they weren't expected to actually grow. The, the boundary change was meant to keep them about the same. So that's not colored, but they, they dropped off a little bit. And down in the, the middle schools, pretty good numbers there. You see Highlands, a little, up a little bit, and Park is one of the, the lower enrollment type schools there, middle school. And then high school, still a little low here on South Ridge. We'd like to see that increase. And hopefully over, over the years, that'll pop back up. Any questions on that? Moving on from there, just some numbers here on the elementary, taking June, and then kind of seeing, you know, what's the new students we might have got from June to October. So you can see first grade, some good numbers there, 46. We generally increase by 25 to 30. So that, that's a good number. And then first and second, all these, you want to see those being positive. So this isn't where we're going to end up necessarily, but it does show, you know, just the, the change. And then we don't get a whole bunch of new kids in sixth, seventh, and eighth. So, you know, that's, that's what it's showing there. And you see the trend for kindergarten. So bounce back up, and that's good news there. Now at the bottom is the budget compared to the October numbers. So we budgeted 11, 1180 for kindergarten, and 1242 is the number for October, and hopefully that'll, that'll grow. So that, that's really some good news there. First grade, again, a lot higher than budgeted, and second, a little bit. Third, fourth, fifth, not so much, pretty close to budget. And sixth, seventh, they generally not a lot changed there, and hit that pretty well.
Vic, or maybe Dr. Pierce, have we seen any of the headcount trends for kindergarten out further, like 25, 26, 27? Are we, are we still looking at like the 1,200, 1,250 range projected, or are we looking at bigger groups?
You mean ba- based on birth rate data?
Yeah, because we're going, I mean, we're going, you know, 1,100, we peaked at 1,450, and we now have kind of dropped back down to 1,200, 1,250. I'm just curious, futures thinking?
The birth rate data, you know, that is what the 1180 would have been. We would use that data, probably a little conservative, but probably right around there. I think actually it was maybe 1,150. But it wasn't trending back up. Normally, we would take these numbers here and plug them in and see what that percentage is, and if, you know, if it does any difference for the out years, we would look at that.
Well, we can go back and look at, you're reminding me, when, when we did that kind of extensive enrollment update and we did projections for, yeah, to see like what does our, did our like projection.
How close we were.
Yeah, and it was, it, you know, it wasn't, I mean, it was better than we projected, so whether that trend is going to hold, it's.
I don't see it being like 100 more kindergartners, or you see something like 20, 30 or something.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, okay, 25, 26, 27, as we potentially lose classes of 1,300, 1,400, and backfill with 1,200, 1,250. So what's the, so just based on that enrollment projection, it looks like it's, it's trending down some, right? So I, I just, I want to be looking.
Yeah. So the, the projections we had going out were decreasing overall, I think 150 to 170 FTE every year.
Yeah, because I think at one point, I think right when you were coming in, we kind of peaked, like we were growing pretty rapidly, and we kind of peaked. And now we're kind of in that point where we're stagnant, and we're going to drop a little bit over the next few years and stay stagnant.
Definitely. If we could hold steady, it would be good instead of losing. But, but anyway, this looks like it's turning out a little better than, than we expected. And again, in the next slide, we'll kind of go over the budget projected and what that means for the district. So here's the elementary. We budgeted 8,051. So we're projecting, based on the two months we have and based on the past trends, we're projecting 8204. So that's 153 FTE greater than what we would have budgeted. And that's worth about $1.6 million, taking about $10,000, a little more, times those kids. So that's just a projection. But, you know, hopefully that comes in even higher than that. And then middle school, that's not going to change much. October, generally, it really stays pretty, pretty steady. And that's going to come in pretty close to budget there. High school, that does change a lot. We will lose 100 to 150 students from the October versus the, the whole average. So it's going to come in under budget by 40. But with these numbers here, there's a total of 75 reduction, and that's $750,000 that, you know, we would kind of not get. The CTE program, though, is up by 35 kids. So they'll get 350,000 that goes to the CTE program. So there is a net reduction of 40. The impact, you know, it's a little different. We will, this 750,000 will offset this 1.6 million for basic ed. So 1.6 million here because elementary increases. That's 750,000 because high school decreases. That's your basic ed, you know, over budget. That's going to be what's 8, 900,000, 800,000, $900,000. And then CTE is going to get the 350,000. That has to stay with the CTE program.
Okay, Vic, I'm sorry. I know you have to remind me of this every time you present, but help me, because when you say CTE, that's, I'm not going to walk into one of our high schools and see the CTE kids off separately, right? They're housed in our high school.
Yeah, but you're going to see them in the CTE classrooms.
Right.
So, so that money has to go towards those programs.
To those programs.
Yes. Yeah. So that's what, whenever, you know, people want to add CTE classes and stuff, we really question, okay, where are those kids coming from? And then, because you're going to, you know, the money kind of moves around.
And do we have the CTE, we have CTE programming at all of our high schools, correct?
We do. In fact, we're going to dig into that a little.
It's a great program.
Oh, yeah.
And students, it's not like, for the most part, students are both, right? Like, like I'm taking maybe two classes that are CTE and the rest of my classes aren't CTEs. So FTE-wise, I'm 0.6 basic ed and 0.4 CTE.
It's just that from a funding standpoint, if we wanted to increase our CTE programming, we would have to have the, the FTE there in order to be able to have the funding to support it.
Yes, and that's what they, they're showing here. They have more FTE. They would probably, as we work on the budget for the next year, they'll be wanting to add some, probably some programs and things and do some, some things.
But at the expense of having the funding for the general.
And that's what's kind of interesting with Running Star and CTE and some of these programs, they're great programs. And as they grow and more students enroll, it does decrease your, your gen ed, basic ed, FTE. But the FTE increases in those like categorical programs.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
CTE, they'll have an opportunity. A lot of times, if things come in better, they'll, you know, upgrade some of their technical equipment, you know, and some of those things for the classrooms.
Does one high school have more than, I feel like, I feel like Kennewick, I hear about that, but I don't, I don't hear about so much. Maybe that's just me.
Yeah, I mean, I think Kennewick does have a little more, and then I can't remember off the top of my head, then maybe in the presentation, they'll, they'll know that.
They're pretty even, I mean, they're pretty evenly spread across the system.
So, so you're tracking that, right? And then TRITech, so we got TRITech here. Prior to TRITech, 109 increase, and we kind of did some of the math there. So TRITech, similar type program. Then CTE, the money stays with TRITech, 619 students October 1st. We budgeted 525. We're projecting 591, so it's a pretty big increase, 66 times a little over $10,000, $11,000. So that's 750,000 that will go to TRITech. And I think they did add a few teachers and stuff, so, so some of that net out. So overall, the total without Running Star and Open Doors, 175. And we kind of walked through the math, elementary, less high school, and then you're going to get the CTE and the TRITech, that's about $2 million overall. They would be, you know, better than the budget. And some of that is basic ed, about 850,000 or so this, this net here. Tracking that. And then the programs, the, the pass-through money we talked about, those are programs down here. So we are projecting 125 for Open Doors. If it holds steady, we budget 80. Put as much time in this as I should because the money's pass-through, but this would result in about $450,000 more to CBC and EST. So they would bill us, and that money goes to them to support those programs.
And the only thing I would add about Open Doors and those GED programs, typically those are students who are being re-engaged. So they're not maybe currently in a school. Milka's reaching out and re-engaging, and they're either coming back to, you know, one of our schools to complete their, you know, their, their diploma or entering a GED program, so.
And the state's pushing those programs pretty good, and we're doing the same.
And you may not know this, Vic, maybe Tracy, you will, but it's, there's a big jump from, you know, the 24, where, where was the big jump? It was from 80 to 125. Is that where it is? Where's the slide?
Yeah.
At the same time, at the same time that we had decreased enrollment at Endeavor and Legacy. And I, I was just guessing that those students are being transferred over to Open Doors. Is that what's happening?
I, I know that Guy is doing, putting a lot of effort into working with students and families to say, to, to ensure that whether they're enrolled in Legacy or in Endeavor, that it's a good fit for them. Like, we don't, we want to keep the kids as long as they're being successful and everything, but there are some kids who enroll in online and don't engage at all. And so it's like, well, that's not a good fit. And we do a lot of interventions to try to help them re-engage. But if it's just not working, then we want to make sure that families and kids. But if it's just not working, then we want to make sure that families and kids know what all the other, you know, potential options are. So it could be a direct correlation. I'd have to dig into it, but.
Could be. So this is about, so the special ed, I want to touch on that. So right now, and I don't have any numbers on that. We budgeted twenty-seven hundred special ed students. It's run a little bit behind. We could end up fifty students below budget there and that's about five hundred thousand dollars. But it's a little tricky. There's a lot of paperwork involved in getting kids, you know, classified as special education. So we could be a little behind on that, but that is run a little below. We budgeted, we ended up at twenty-seven hundred last year. And usually we just budget the same amount and normally we, we grow. But right now it's still looking like we may not hit that twenty-seven hundred. So there'll be more on that, probably another enrollment updates. Tony Billard can touch on those things. So the next meeting, December eleventh, will be a financial recap twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's, you know, we had talked about, you know, having a fund balance of at least fifty million and it's probably closer to fifty-five million. So that's good news. Updated financial projections for twenty-four, twenty-five, where you'll see, you know, some things like enrollment, you know, we're going to get this much more money like we talked about. And then some other revenue streams where there'll be an update, whether it's special ed, you know, five hundred thousand below of equalization. Some of those will be downloaded those in. And, you know, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we had expenditures exceeding revenues by five to six million. And the hope is that some of those revenues will be coming in to be able to break even and do some, some, some more, you know, improvements or our targets and programs, some one type type things.
Thanks Vic, any questions, any more questions for Vic?
I, I do have a question. It sounds, I don't like the way it sounds, but I don't mean it this way necessarily. But this is the best way to ask it to get the information I want. So with that open door program, with it growing so much this last year and with it being pass-through program, that, am I correct? That's funding that we're losing, so to speak, by transitioning more of our students over to open door? I'm, I'm not saying that that's not what they want.
And Dr. Pierce can chime in. You have to hire the teachers and, and do the program. Whether, you know, the school district could, those programs cost a lot of money. They're, you know, they take, they're challenging. So whatever's best for kids, that's what you'd want to do.
Sure.
And if you, if people think they can do it better, then that's, you know, but you have to have space and all sorts of things. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one. Those kids come back and you get, you know, four hundred and fifty million dollars. You have to have the staff and all those things to do that.
It's important.
I can provide some pretty detailed information about that because we did look into, you know, what would it take? And kind of compared what, what the, these two existing programs are and what are all the, you know, like what would all the implications be? So I have a whole bunch of information and I'll, I'll share it with the board this week.
And maybe that's, you have some new information too, I think, on those type of programs.
I do.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot going on with the state and different things with that.
Great.
Anything else for Vic? All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, we have a highly capable program update. Alyssa, you are up.
Set that up for you? Yeah, well, you know, I'm going to let you do it.
All right, good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to share some updates on highly capable. We had several presentations last year on our highly capable program. This is an update to some of the work that's been going on and where things are at for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So just want to remind the board that we have goals that our students are engaged learners. And working to improve our highly capable program is in our strategic plan objectives. Specifically that we're implementing a cluster model in our K-five programs. I'm going to talk a little bit about that tonight. And always working to provide relevant, rigorous and engaging instruction for all of our students. I want to spend a little time talking about some improvement efforts that happened the last two years. And kind of our, where we're at this year because of those efforts. And then also a little more explanation on what the cluster model is, some examples of strategies in those classrooms. And then also some updates to our middle school honors and highly capable programs. So I'll, I'm going to try to keep it brief, have a little bit of a review of the work that's been happening here in the district. Some requirements from the state with universal screeners and then kind of where we're at right now in Kennewick. A couple of years ago, we had in our strategic plan that we would do a program review of our highly capable program. And we wanted to make sure we were looking, we started a cycle of reviewing different programs. Highly capable was one of our first ones that we looked at. And with that, last year, there was a requirement to have a universal screener in elementary school to, for highly capable programs. So with both of these things happening two years ago and last year, I just want to lay a little more groundwork in like what highly capable is. It's really clearly defined in the WAC. Not going to read all of this, but I do want to highlight that our highly capable students have significantly advanced academic levels when compared to their peers. They're able to learn quickly. They have intellectual strengths. And as a district, we need to have a continuum of services from identification through high school. So with all of that, two years ago, we had three recommendations that we really worked on, especially last year. And to review those quickly, we wanted to look at our programs to make sure, no matter what elementary school you were at, there were, the services matched the need. We had some services after school, some in school, and we wanted to make sure we had matching services at all of our elementary schools. We also wanted to make sure we were communicating the screening process, the universal screener, and having ways for parents or staff to refer students to be recommended for highly capable services. And lastly, the recommendation was that we have opportunities for training and staff collaboration. So we worked on those last year. And just a reminder, our, so our models up until now at the elementary, we have our self-contained program at Vista. It's called Opportunities for Gifted or COG. We had at four elementary schools a pull-out program. And we had after-school extension activities at our other elementary schools. I mentioned that we had a universal screener requirement that went into effect last year. So in second grade and fifth grade, all of our students completed a universal screener. I'm looking at cognitive abilities. And so that's some of the background work that was happening last year. Some of it was because of program review, some of it was requirements. I, I want to share like that, that universal screener, we, we did identify more kids. So, so in twenty-one, twenty-two, we, in second grade, we had sixty-three students about identified. And in last year, we had ninety-four. So that increased and we had a very big increase in fifth grade. So we, we were pleased with that, the results of that universal screener. And doing a better job of identifying students. I'm going to break it down a little bit more in the next slides as well. So these screeners took place last year, but they didn't necessarily start receiving services until this year. So we're going to kind of go into this year now. So this is our highly capable program model and our continuum of services. Tonight, we're going to just mainly focus on elementary and middle school. We get into some of the high school opportunities in later board presentations in the springtime. But for elementary, we have a cluster model in grades three, four, five. That is at every single elementary school. We have a self-contained program still, that has not changed at COG. And we have advanced and accelerated courses in our middle schools. Okay, so those students who qualified for highly capable services, we, we had an increase. And I just, I wanted to show where they fall across all of our elementary schools. We have highly capable students identified at all of our elementary schools. And they're being served at all of the elementary schools. This slide's slightly different. This color's not quite showing up because we've got our COG students also identified here by that other color here. And then I.
Alyssa, can I ask?
Yeah.
How, how are we, so most of the schools, seven, eight, ten, we have a couple of schools that are one, two and three. How, how is the, the service compare? Is this, so would this just be a one-on-one with a teacher that this student's doing or?
In the cluster model, we would group those students together. So in a grade level, where I say there's two students, we would make sure those two students are sitting together. And we would probably try to group some pretty similar peers with them as well. In a school like Eamon Creek where there's more in a grade level, we might have a little bit larger cluster model, say six, eight students. But we would also have two classrooms as well. We would not have one classroom of twenty-five students.
Right.
And then not have any of the others in that cluster model. Yeah, thank you. I wanted to show you just one other way to look at this information. Because I want to, I want to share that those COG students that are attending the COG program are getting identified at several of our schools. And we attribute that to the universal screener and also our screening process of using that multiple measures and having a team look at that data together to make sure that we are looking at all different factors when we're identifying for those highly capable services. And then we, we didn't want to just drop off those after-school opportunities. We wanted to continue those. So we do have some enrichment opportunities open to all students, but we help support these at the schools. You can see we've got some schools with destination imagination occurring. And we also have schools with Math is Cool happening in after-school opportunities at all levels. I am, just a little bit more about the cluster model and some of our work in our middle school programs. We've got currently a hundred and seventy-eight students receiving highly capable services during the school day in boundary schools. We have fifty-nine cluster model classroom teachers who are getting special training on how to differentiate strategies, how to pace things, how to chunk material and working with those students in the classrooms. And they are being, they had a kickoff in the summer with training from Whitworth. And they're being supported all year by a highly capable specialist. So we want to invest in this model and make sure our teachers are well-trained and our, our students are getting the right services.
Okay, Alyssa, is the highly capable specialist a district, okay, never mind.
Yeah. Good segue. Yeah, we felt it was important that we had someone who could be supporting our teachers, supporting our parents as well on highly capable services and just making sure we had someone overseeing the qualification process. And we are delighted to have Kathy Kern. She's been a longtime Kennewick administrator who knows a lot about highly capable programs and services. So she's meeting regularly with our teacher. She's going out and observing. She's modeling lessons as well. And we're really excited that she's able to help us strengthen this program. A couple of strategies you would see in a cluster model classroom is, this is one called hexagonal thinking. They, these students are making connections with concepts and then changing and making different connections. So they're able to really go deep into content. They're able to really analyze, have good discussion with their peers. These are students at Sage Crest. So it's a, it's a way of showing that we're going to have complex conversations and go deep into a content area. Another example is flexible grouping. If, if kids are getting it, they might step out of a lesson and do some kind of enrichment activity. They might be able to work on some other tasks. I think this one's from Sunset Elementary School. And then I wanted to take a minute to kind of wrap up tonight to talk a little bit about middle school pathways. We, I presented to the board last year on some work we did with math at the middle school. And, and the board will remember, we made sure that this year we would add back in those high school level honors algebra and honors geometry courses with some expectations and guidelines of, these are appropriate placements for some of our highly capable students and need to be taught at the rigor of the high school level. So I wanted to come back to the board and share those sections that were added at the schools. So I've just noted here the honors courses that have been at the, added back in and are being offered at the middle school. And also where we have students going to the high school for courses as well, because there weren't enough students at the school to make us a complete class. We also offer honors English Language Arts. Most of the schools have two sections. One of the schools has three sections of English Language Arts as well, but that is also offered. In middle school, a student might be in both math and ELA. They might just be in math, they might just be in ELA. So those are some of our updates to highly capable. Any questions?
So Alyssa, so as I'm looking at the, this new screener we have, we went from using the N-N-A-T to this.
Yeah.
Cognitive abilities test, we picked up a lot more kids, which is great. So we did that in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Well, and we also picked up more kids because we are screening more, more schools.
Okay. So, so with that in all, so we've had a year of this. Now are those kids keeping up? I guess my, my question is, was that screener accurate? And say, okay, hey, we picked up a hundred and six kids in fifth grade. And a year later, we still have a hundred and six kids or more. Did they keep up and was it an active, was it an accurate screening tool?
Yeah, great question. We are about to enter the window again of doing the universal screener again. So we'll be able to see that data to see if it holds. We, we went with, we moved from the N-N-A-T to the COGAP based on some recommendations that it was a better tool to be using.
So, but I guess the question is, did the kids, did they move, did they move up to next year? So if we had a hundred and six kids in fifth grade, when they got into sixth grade, are, are we still have a hundred and six kids? We, we have some attrition? Just see what I mean? Did the kids keep up with the more rigorous academic challenge?
Was the screening accurate?
Yeah. That's a hard one to answer. We use that to put them into classes. And then in the middle schools, some other factors come in, so it could be even higher. I'm not.
But, but Alyssa, wouldn't, so we screened in the spring.
Yeah.
For placement in the fall, this fall.
Okay, all right.
Right.
So then I'm, so I'm a year ahead of myself.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Never mind.
These hundred and six are in the program now in fifth grade.
Yeah.
Gotcha, all right. Yeah, I just want to make sure they can keep up.
Absolutely.
You just mentioned something that I didn't think about, which was now you're screening more schools. Can you elaborate on that a little bit? Are we screening all schools or there's some schools we're not screening?
Yeah. Two years ago, we were only screening Title I schools to go into after-school programs. Last year, we made sure we did all elementary schools.
Yeah, so if you remember, the model previously was flawed in that it was basically, the screening was provided based on what program was available at the school and not all schools had a highly capable program during the school day. So that's what the shift is now. All the students get screened.
Yeah.
And there's program available at all of the schools.
Screening them all, then we're making sure we have the program to, to help those students advance.
Yeah, so previously only these schools used a screener. These students were placed mostly on their academic acceleration. And so now, all school, all. And so now, all school, all students are taking the screener for all schools.
So the increase in enrollment probably isn't that the screen, the screening is different or better? It could probably just because there's more, we're screening more schools?
If you had opportunity, but it, I think it does show like why it's important to do it again, not just say in second grade. Like that fifth grade one got a lot of kids that were missed earlier.
Well, we'll, we'll know, I think, what you're talking about after the next screening.
Yeah.
Two years to probably-
Yeah, because we'll be able to see if these numbers are around the same next year at this time.
And I think the other part of the question is, once a student gets screened into receiving highly capable services, are they experiencing success?
Yeah, they stay in that.
That's other data we could look at.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I have two quick questions, but if you, go ahead.
I, I don't know if it's a question necessarily. I, my hope is that doing the universal screening, both in second grade and fifth grade, and doing this now where we have, we're capturing more kids younger. I just, I have a kid that is highly intelligent, but not high achieving and really could have benefited from being called out in second grade just because she learns so differently than everyone else. And so my concern is for that subset of kids that probably, they get captured in this, right? I mean, she had the opportunity. She was screened in fifth grade. And yeah, her scores were every bit as high as I thought they would be, but still doesn't perform well in school. And so I'm listening to this and I still feel like it's really focused on those kids that are still high achieving rather than those that just- So what are we doing for those kiddos that-
Well, there's two things that we're discussing and we haven't been able to like- But we wanna make sure the service matches the need. So for our students who are academically advanced, we want them challenged. For our students who are cognitively scoring very high, we need to do a better job of creating some different programs for them. And that's our next step. Like, we're getting this cluster model going. And the next step is looking at creativity screeners. Like, and looking at different, there are different types of highly capable, not just that accelerated learner. So we're gonna get there.
So we're getting there, great.
The other thing I do wanna mention is we're entertaining, like doing a universal screener in first grade so we could add second grade cluster model. So, so we could start that sooner. That's not totally fleshed out, but we, we think we could do that.
Real quick, the, the one, we're busing, are we, I'm assuming we're busing some of these middle schoolers to the high school for those classes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then two, with the universal screener, how are we catching? Are we catching those who, ELL, second language? Like, is this just given in other languages so we can?
In second grade, it's all non-verbal. And that's one reason that we go with that. And then that is one of the indicators that we look at for a multilingual learner. A sign of highly capable is learning language quickly. So we look at their RITA score. And if they have more than a year's worth of growth, that goes into the data we look at to make sure we get those kids.
Okay, so our whole screening process encompasses 19,366 kids, like Nick shared. Gotcha.
Well, all of the second graders.
All the students. That's a lot of second, fifth graders.
Yeah.
All right. Any other, any other questions for Alyssa before I make fun of my friend? Thank you, Alyssa.
You bet, thank you.
All right. Next up, career and college readiness and career and technical education. Dr. Pierce, Matt Scott, and Alyssa. Alyssa will be back joining you.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna tag team this one a little bit.
All right. We wanna provide an update on our college and career readiness and career and technical education efforts. And in September, we spent a lot of time, as you know, presenting our academic data, our state assessment data. Spent a lot of conversations about what are we doing to improve scores, our new math curriculum, all of those efforts. And so that's all tied to our goal of all students are engaged learners. Because part of that is wanting to ensure that every student is meeting grade-level standards. The, our third student-focused goal, all students ready for their future, is an "and." Not only do we want all of our students meeting or exceeding grade-level standards throughout the system, we want them to be prepared for what happens after high school. So we want them to be meeting grade-level standards, graduate from high school, and be prepared for what comes after high school. So tonight's presentation can be thought of of sort of the continuation of the things that we talked about in September, really tied to the goal of all students are ready for their future. So we have a lot of work planned this year that we started talking about last year. You remember, there was a board committee that was formed. And so we just wanna provide an update on some of where we're headed and get any more input and direction from the board as we continue these efforts for the year. So the objectives that I'm referring to, of course, are on our strategic plan. There's a whole section on college and career readiness. And so it's a little hard to read because it's pretty small here on the screen. But we're gonna be focusing tonight on the feasibility study that we will conduct this year to look, to see if there are potential ways of expanding opportunities for students in high schools to earn credit and to learn some other skills like financial literacy and other career college readiness skills. We're gonna link all of this to our high school and beyond plan processes and School Links implementation, so we'll touch on that. Matt's gonna touch on the work we're doing with the comprehensive school counseling program. We've heard from Robin at the last board meeting, I think it was the last board meeting or maybe the board meeting before about the Family Hub and expanding that. So we're just gonna touch on that a little bit tonight. And then talk about career and technical education as well. So really, all of this falls under this umbrella of high school and beyond plan. And the question for us is like, how can we optimize the high school and beyond plan process? Because it's not just a, it's not a document, it's a process. How do we optimize that process to really realize our mission, which is for each and every student in our system? So again, we're gonna talk about high school and beyond plan, just give a brief overview and the purpose of that because I think it'll help provide that umbrella of where all this work falls. We'll touch on where we are with School Links implementation, the comprehensive counseling, school counseling program, Family Hub, CTE. And then we'll end with the conversation around the expansion of learning opportunities for, for new learning and for credit. So I like to start with high school and beyond plan because it is a graduation requirement for every student. There's three big graduation requirements. You have to complete all the required credit in the, in the required areas. You have to complete a graduation pathway. And you have to complete a high school and beyond plan. But a high school and beyond plan is not just a checklist of activities. It is a process that kind of brings all that credit and pathway parts together under an umbrella. It's a process that starts in middle school and is designed to help students start thinking about, what am I interested in? What, what do I like to do? What kind of, what might I be good at? And where do I see myself going after high school? What are, what are my post-secondary goals? And what careers might I be interested in? So when they start high school, they can be intentionally doing the things, taking the courses, participating in the PSAT, all of those kinds of things, and starting to do the planning in high school for what's after planning. So by the time they graduate, they have a plan. And, and they have a concrete, you know, idea, not just an idea, but an actual plan of what they're doing after high school. And so, like I said, it really bridges the other two components of the graduation diploma requirements together. And it's very individualized by student. And it involves, I wanna highlight this part. It's a process for students, parents, and teachers to guide students. So it's a collaborative process. This is in its ideal and how it, this is all supposed to work. So there are some requirements of the high school beyond plan, some things that students do have to do throughout the four years of their high school. And, and some of it starts in middle school. So what they're, they're, they have processes to help identify what are their career goals, what areas of, you know, what kind of interests do they have? What are those educational goals? They chart a course for planning high school. And this is a plan that gets, should be getting reviewed and updated every year because it very well might change from what a student starts to think about in middle school to, you know, what they might start to be thinking about they're doing when they're a junior in high school. And, and there's some resume, activity logs, maybe community service, things like work experience or things that they're doing throughout high school that's a part of this. And then evidence that they've received information and assistance from us in accessing financial aid. So I wanna, I just wanted to start with that because School Links is the electronic system that is supposed to be helping manage these high school and beyond plan processes. And so one of our objectives this year is really to expand and strengthen that implementation and the understanding of high school beyond and, and the power of School Links. So one piece of this work is really about increasing family awareness and communication. There's also statewide efforts because School Links is now this adopted statewide platform. There's now a universal platform for high school and beyond. We should be receiving at some point some funding for this, for School Links, because we adopted it two years ago and we're paying for it locally. But now it's the statewide system. So there's some statewide learning and support coming down the pike. And we're really looking at, how do we help counselors, students, administrators, teachers, families, really all better engage around this platform? Not, not that it's about the platform, but the platform helps enable the high school and beyond plan processes. So just, I took a couple of quick screenshots because I don't know that the entire board has really had an opportunity to look at School Links. We provided some logins for Ms. Gladhill and, and Dr. Miller because they were on the committee that we formed. And so what the system does, you can see there's a little, this says activities here. So in this screenshot, I'm logged in as a student. It's a demo mode. And so you can see there's some assessments that they start. And these are like, would you rather do this or that? What kinds of things are you interested in? Skills that you might have? So these aren't like academic tests. They're about learning styles and discovering, you know, what, what would kind of campus lifestyle would you want? So a lot of systems or assessments to help kids think about those things. This module is, you can see, there's financial aid, employability skills, jobs and internships, planning for four-year schools, college application process. So this is all a learning hub that's built into the School Links system.
Can I pause you super fast?
Yeah.
So, okay, so a student would log in-
Yep.
Listen, take these assessments. And they would kind of like, the computer, the system would learn sort of what, what they are, who they are, whatever, right? And then now that's leading them.
Yeah, it's, it, it, and I think Annie, if you wanted to, it looks like you wanna share. But it's, it's, why don't you go ahead and then I'll chime in?
So they ask you a series of questions kind of based off your personality, like your charac, like Dr. Pierce said, do you like to live in the country or do you like to live in the city? And then it will give you a list of schools that would be preferable for you. And then it will give you a list of careers that might be applicable for you. Like, I took it my junior year and it gave me the career I wanted to go into. It said I'd be great at that. I was very happy with that. And it also gave me a really good idea of the schools that would fit best for me. And it gave me all the information about how much money it would cost, how to apply for FAFSA, all of that.
Based on, based on the things you like to do, the, the country versus city versus small campus.
Yeah, so it will ask you questions like that. It will ask you questions about your family. Like, did your families go to school or did your parents go to school? So it'll ask you a wide range based off the different activities. And like, do you like to learn in groups or do you like to learn individually? Do you like, like, different questions like that?
And then, so then when you did that, it recommended a number of schools?
Yeah.
And then, and then did you look into those schools or is that more? I know we're probably getting to that, but like-
Yeah, so it gives you information on School Links about the different schools. And it has like an explore page for each school and tells you information about that.
Did that help you?
Yes, it did. And it helped me apply for school as well.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Rand.
Do you wanna do the rest of it? And, and I just wanna say, you know, that the assessments aren't meant to be, you should do this, you know, because you answered X, Y, Z, now you're supposed to be a nurse or something. It's saying, based on your responses and your answers, here's some things you might wanna explore further. Here's something that might be of interest to you. And then on the school piece, like this page that we're looking at right now shows a whole bunch of different schools and universities that students can delve into and find out more about. And so there's, like you can see, there's videos and pictures and maps and links and all sorts of things built into this system. And then there's this, this, on the VR workplace tour. So it's also trying to make that connection between interests and post-secondary education requirements connected to careers of interest. So there's a, a bunch of different like VR workplace tours here. So not every student can, unfortunately, I wish they could, but not every student can have an internship or have an opportunity to be at a workplace while in high school. But there's some ways that students can help it, you know, we can help students explore different workplaces and careers through this online system. So that's just a real like high level of School Links. And we're trying at the district end to increase awareness of School Links. It's part of what we're building out on the Family Hub under High School and Beyond Plan. We wanna make sure families know what it can do, that they can access it along with their student. And I do have an update on that point to share because when we met in the committee last year, we talked about the fact that students have to invite their parent. Like, one of the first things they're supposed to do is invite their parent to be able to access. Well, now there's some ways that parents can be given a da, access to a dashboard that then lets them access the students who are connected to them. So we're working on getting that communication set up and the directions for that so families can have more direct access to be able to use it as a tool to sit alongside with their, you know, sit alongside their child, just like we wanna be doing that at school.
Does it have the option of having it be app-based? If you could have, tell them that needs to be app-based?
App-based.
Because if it was just a little-
Okay.
Widget on my phone, that would be a lot easier for me to stay constantly aware of it more than needing to go to the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good. I don't know, and so we can follow up on that. What's great, I think, just real quick, is that because it's now the statewide platform, I think there's gonna be a lot more opportunity for it to do things, right? Because it's gonna be all for the entire state.
I was just gonna touch on that point you made too about, like, it's not just the students, it's the parents, right? Because I, I think, I think when my daughter graduated, that was the first year of using it. And it was like, coming to the end, it was like, oh, hey, have you heard of School Links? You need to log in and like do a portion. And it was like, oh, yeah, like, okay, let's, let's do it. So, yeah, getting, getting parents involved early.
Yes, that's our goal. Right, and helping people understand and students understand, it's not, it's not a set of, like, it's not hoops to jump through. It's a, it's a tool, it's a platform that's available to help you think about what you wanna do after high school and then to plan what kind of courses you wanna take. And I might, I might turn to you here too. So Annie's a good example of that because I, I was talking to Annie and Diego about our upcoming Community Partners event and, and some of what we wanna talk about there. And do you wanna, do you mind just sharing what you were sharing about the, the teaching academy?
Oh, yes. So I do teaching academy with Mr. Biff. And it's been great. We've been learning all about Teaching Bridge with WSU Tri-Cities. They actually came and talked to us. We're taking a field trip on November 2nd. And although I don't plan on doing Teach, Teaching Bridge, they gave us some really good information about internship opportunities and different statistics, different statistics on kids going right from Teaching Bridge straight into teaching after they graduate college. It was, it's really good information. That class has been really helpful, just- That class has been really helpful, just learning about building community. Actually, like, we're building our resumes right now. So even if you've already been accepted into colleges, we're all writing college essays. We're all doing resumes. We're all getting three letters of recommendation. Doesn't matter if you already have an internship or already been accepted to school. Just so we have all of them ready to go once we're in college.
And that's an example of a CTE course. So trying to, you know, bring all of these pieces together. One of the things for parents, in addition to building out the hub and and providing them access directly to the platform and communicating with them about that. We also heard from some of our students in the Superintendent Student Advisory Council that, you know, sometimes people pay more attention to a piece of paper coming home in the mail. Because that's kind of a novelty these days, right? There's so much information coming on Parents Square and online. So our CTE in college and career director, Abby Mattson, worked on putting a letter together and actually physically mailing this home to to families. And again, it's not taking the place of the online information or any of the Family Hub work that we're doing. But we're just trying to figure out how can we best communicate with everybody to raise awareness about these things. So this is just an example of a letter that went home explaining high school and beyond and School Links and so forth. At the state level, like I said, School Links has been adopted as the universal platform. Starting in September through May, there's a big, they they have a big advisory council that's been developed with district and different agency and community partnership stakeholders involved. And they're meeting to help inform OSPI's development of guidance and support resources. So as the State Board of Education is the body that governs graduation requirements. So I don't anticipate that they're going to change anything. What they're trying to do is enhance, really help districts all across the state try to do what we're trying to do, right? How do you, how do we really make the most of this platform? And optimize what high school and beyond is actually supposed to be? Not just a piece of paper or a bunch of hoops kids are jumping through. So you'll see that they're working on some potential curriculum, development and training. We we don't need the platform implementation planning, so we're ahead of the curve on this one by a couple of years. But the community-based organization and planning and some of the PD and training, we think, might be helpful for us. So we're following that pretty closely, what's happening at the state. So this is one component of this, right? We know we need people. We need to engage families and we need our school staffs, obviously, to be working with our our students. We need our classroom teachers, we need our counselors, administrators. So on the counseling side of things, there's a nice connection. Because one of our objectives is to review the implementation of our comprehensive school counseling program. And the essential components of that program are academic, career and social emotional development. And I just want to remind the board that we, a policy was passed in July of 2023 because some new state law was passed, really being clear about what is the, what is a comprehensive school counseling program? And what is the work of a school counselor? So it, much of this is specified in law and in policy that that the counseling program should focus on these big three domains of school counseling, social emotional development, academic development and career readiness. So that academic development and career readiness really fits in well here. Some of the work that was done initially around our comprehensive counseling program was how do we ensure that counselors' time is protected to be able to focus on this important work and not do other sorts of things that don't really fall within these domains? Things like monitoring student testing, supervising students during the day. So kind of non-counseling staff duties. So a lot of that work was done and and clarified in terms of what they shouldn't be doing. And then the policy and law also specifies that the program will establish an annual program review and program assessment process. So that's where I'm going to just ask Matt to speak briefly. Because one of the pieces of work we want to do this year in terms of conducting that program review is to do some of these things on the screen. So I don't know if you want to just chime in a little bit?
Just for, just really quick. So, yeah, so the the plan to this point has really been about, you know, kind of defining a little bit what those things were in terms of the use of time, what are direct services, what are indirect services and those types of things. And I think counselors, principals, you know, all have really desired to be a little bit more definitive about the, you know, what is the actual work? What are we doing around those three domains? Much of it is already done, but we just want to very clearly define that. And so and and probably more importantly, we want to make sure that our families understand those roles really well as well. So adding that into our plan, making sure there's really clear coordination of that. And this year, last year, we spent time with them on kind of that time analysis. This year, they've really worked. BJ Wilson, our Director of Student Services, who oversees the counseling program, has helped them develop counseling goals at each of the schools that are connected with their school improvement plans, again, around these component areas. So they really want to make sure that there's connection to that work, that that work is really transparent to everybody in the community. So that everybody will know what's the counselor's role with School Links and high school and beyond planning. And it's very apparent. And then we also want to work with our counselors and with every, all the folks to really enhance that communication piece with families. So again, counselors work really intensely with students in their schools and kind of rely on the students to give that information to their parents and really kind of expanding that that role so that there's really better communication in terms of what's going on with families. All of this will also help us determine where are the areas where maybe counselors need some some professional development. So for example, this last year, it was around some of our 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 social emotional learning. What are some of the tools that can be used? What are some of the models that can be used? Similarly, we want to make sure that our, the counselors are are well-advised within that career advisement piece in terms of giving students accurate information around, you know, high school courses and how they feed into college courses, those types of things. And again, by delineating those jobs and those duties of the counselor, we really feel that we can help them identify where are we needing to provide some training. And so they have, as part of this plan, really probably received more targeted professional development over the last couple of years than they had in previous years. So just a couple of highlights in regards to the plan.
And since the WAC already has some parameters in place, you know, eighty percent of your time needs to be spent in this capacity, only twenty percent this way. Are we following a similar model when we're breaking these three areas down, saying, we value all three of these roles, but we really want to see you spending sixty percent of your time in career readiness, for example, twenty percent in this, twenty percent in that? I don't know how that breaks down. The priority may be different from school to school, but.
The priorities are definitely different level to level. So I know that elementary, the role of the elementary counsel, counselor, the middle school counselor, high school counselor are very different. And so they will be spending maybe a little bit more time in certain component areas, depending on their level. But that was really what that that study of time, we implemented that last year. And so now we're just kind of finally tuning it aligned with those job duties. And the other thing is just having real clarity about what are direct and indirect services. Even though it's really defined within the WAC and within our policy, the specific day-to-day tasks that you do are not necessarily like, okay, is this qualify as one or the other? And making sure there's clarity about that. So both those things are happening.
How long have our counselors been, I mean, just, is this new that right now? I mean, how long have they been doing this?
Yeah, so I'm going to have to try to think here. So we had, during our last contract bargaining, which was two and a half years ago, that was the year that we brought the policy language and that the the WAC language was developed. So then we spent some time the next year, so two years ago, involved with, working with a group of counselors, administrators and a task force to really help understand, you know, kind of from a contractual standpoint, a work condition standpoint, what does this all mean? And so we did that for a year. And so last year was really the first year of implementation of components of this. And so during that time, we've been using, you know, just our counselor meeting time. Again, they, for what, for example, they really wanted to have more information about the the ASK, which is American School Counselors Association. It's the model that all of this is based on. And so we had provided them training over the course of a day where somebody was there to help them understand what this model was that this plan was built on. So it's really been about an implementation and ratcheting up of those things over the course of the last couple of years. So it's been on the radar for about two and a half.
So if we're asking our kids, if we say, hey, have you guys seen this? Have you went through it? Most of our kids should say, yeah, I've been, I've seen that, I've kind of.
I don't know that, I don't know that this, I don't know that students would be able to say like, oh, this is what I, here's what my counselor is doing that is this thing. If your your middle school, if your middle school students have probably seen their counselors coming into class to talk to them about high school beyond planning over the last couple of years, that didn't happen previous. So that's an example of them working within that career advisement and academic advisement piece. I think that students will, in particular in elementary, will talk more about their counselor coming into their classrooms and developing, providing some social emotional development and curriculum. So I think they'll see some of those. At the high school, again, I think that, I mean, I I hate to to speak for what the students might be experiencing. But I think that, again, high school counselors are so focused on the academic counseling and the career advisement that I don't know that they're, I mean, and maybe Annie can talk a little bit.
I was going to ask Annie, is it, this is career advice?
It is, it is. I mean, but again, they, I think the school counselor will say, we've always been really focused on this. Where, and again, going back to our study session, pre-year study session from last year, I think the counselors have found over time that a lot of their time is spent working with students who are credit deficient or who are having struggles and those types of things versus the time within that eighty percent direct services and twenty percent indirect of working with all students on their cohort. And so again, really working to to help define those activities and to help make sure that we're not focusing more attention on less students, if that makes sense.
Oh, it makes total sense. Annie, so how did you hear about it? How did you, who pushed you into this?
I would say in the high schools specifically, I go to my counselor more so for academic help, like.
So so you were initiating that?
Yes, I am initiating. Our counselors do come in once at the beginning of the year to talk about School Links and make sure that we're completing everything, especially if you're a senior, because it's a graduation requirement. And then they come in, if you're a junior and sophomore, and help you sign up for classes next year. But as for coming into classes regularly for social emotional learning or help, I wouldn't say that that's as normal as average for us.
I'm more concerned about like the, are the kids who plan to go to college or don't know if they're going to college or thinking about it, or maybe this this career or that career, whatever, right? Are they being, are they seeing this, using it, or the counselor pushing that?
And when you're, in the this, are you talking about School Links?
Yes.
Okay. That's one of the things that we want to make sure is happening. I don't know that we could definitively say, I don't know when you sit down with your counselor if School Links gets brought up.
More so at the beginning and then towards the end.
Okay. So and 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 on the one hand, you know, what we want to have, so the tool is there. We want to make sure students understand it, know how to use it. We want to make sure families understand it, know how to use it. And and we want to make sure it's not just being viewed as there's some activities that you have to check off as part of a graduation requirement. But you can really be using this on an ongoing basis to explore, to learn, to research colleges and do those kinds of things. So if Annie was coming into her counselor at some point, I'm just making this up, and saying, you know, I know I want to be a teacher, but I'm not quite sure what what school I want to go to yet. That the counselor would be like, oh, well, hey, let's bring up School Links and let's see how that can help you. In addition to whatever other information they have that would be helpful for her. So that's, that's kind of what we're trying to work on this year is really clarifying and being really transparent about what should, what should students be expecting? What should families be expecting? What, in terms of the direct and indirect? Because like, some of the indirect services, I think, would be those whole classroom, or that might actually be a direct service. But there's things that counselors are are, I won't even, I don't want to go.
Credit audits would be an example of maybe an indirect service. You know, you're doing a credit audit on your cohort of students to determine who you might need to touch base with, who, you know, looks like they might be becoming credit deficient or something like that. And similarly, you know, probably doing some of those audits too, because we've asked counselors to give us information about the students in their in their cohort who are who are above a three-point-two GPA, for example, so that we can submit those names to to the guaranteed admissions program. So those are examples of maybe the indirect services that they would be providing.
And with School Links, that you can mine all sorts of data. So you could, you can filter, I I think, I showed this, a view of this at one point to the board, where we can look at what are the top careers that students are saying they're interested in so forth. For example, you can mine data to say which which students in our, in as ninth graders, I'm just making this up, are interested in potentially teaching careers. And then are we doing outreach to those students to make sure they know about Teaching Academy? And, you know, helping them get into Teaching Academy because that's a really helpful thing to do, even if you're not going to do Teaching Bridge? That kind of a thing. So ways of using the system to enhance the ability to even provide the indirect service.
Yeah, I think you're going to say in a few slides from now, it's not just college, right? It's also, you know, agriculture, it's it's.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Right?
Yeah.
So that's just like what you said right there. I mean, if we can potentially be connecting those kids who want to be what a plumber, whatever, with with the community and the trades and things like that, right?
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, a lot of questions.
Okay, no. And it, this is great because I think it, what you're seeing is that there's the, all these pieces that need to be, that need to come together. And that's really what we're trying to make happen. I'm only going to touch on this real quick because Robin already shared about this a couple of meetings ago. But, you know, we're really wanting to build out this Family Hub with these little videos and real helpful tools. So people can see, like, here's how you access School Links. And here's, here's, here's some information, a little, we should have Annie do it, she did a great job, you know? Here's, here's a little one-minute video about like, what is the high school and beyond plan? Things like that to just, beyond just written words, how can we help everybody understand all of this? So some of the content that we identified, even after the the last board meeting, was for the Family Hub, high school and beyond School Links, really understanding the graduation requirements, the those big three graduation requirements, credit, pathway, high school and beyond. The two-dos by grade level, that was something that we discussed in the board committee. That really is a family, wouldn't it be great for you to know, hey, I've got a ninth grader. These are the things that I should be, I should, as a parent, know that my ninth grader should be doing. So I can help engage in that that dialogue too. And when do they take the PSAT and all of those kinds of things? Also, the benefits of PSAT, and we did put something out this year because we realized while we're getting information out to families that the PSAT is coming and to students, the PSAT is, you know, scheduled for this day. Everybody might not know what the PSAT is and why you should, as a parent, encourage your student to take it and what are the benefits of it? So thinking about those kinds of videos and, you know, other ideas that that you might have. But that's what we've got kind of queued up so far. That brings us to career and technical education because that's really a big part of this. And I all, I before handed over to Alyssa. Our objective, our stated objective this year is just to publish a CTE course catalog. Sometimes we hear that people think CTE is only available at TRITech. Or they don't really understand what CTE is. So we're trying to build understanding of that. Because as I mentioned, it's not, it's not an either or. You don't take CTE classes or you take classes that lead to college. I'm going to come back to Teaching Academy because it's a great example. Teaching Academy is a CTE course. And most student, if you want to be a teacher, you have to go to college, right? So it's not like you're choosing between CTE. But many CTE pathways could lead to a trade that's still going to require skilled and technical training after high school, but might not require a two- or four-year degree. Other careers in that same pathway might require a two- or four-year degree. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Alyssa to share a few things about CTE.
Okay.
I'm excited to share some of, um, our CTE offerings with all of you, uh, this evening, and it's gonna hit on some of the questions and comments that have been made earlier. Annie, I might put you on the spot on a couple of things, too. Um, so our CTE, um, courses are available to explore different career options, um, students to develop leadership, um, during these, um, they, we have to be offering courses that are in-demand occupations as well, and focused on growing industries. Like Dr. Pierce said, CTE is in all of our middle schools and all of our high schools. There are six program areas, there's over 80 courses available. Um, I'll get into the six program areas in a minute. Um, and we have, we have a lot of middle school and high school students enrolled in high school cour-, or in CTE courses. A lot of these courses, um, students are eligible to get a certification, sometimes in courses or just a little bit more training afterwards. Um, there's also opportunity to receive college credit through lots of our CTE courses. Um, so the six program areas of CTE are agriculture, business and marketing, family consumer science, Teaching Academy, that we've been talking about falls under family consumer science, health sciences, STEM, and skilled and technical. Okay. The role of CTE is to really help, um, operationalize that high school and beyond plan, um, and make sure we've got our students thinking about what they want to do after high school, um, providing, um, relevant training into fields. Um, I, I do want to share that our CTE teachers come from industry. So it, it's someone who was working as a photographer and then becomes a teacher. It's someone who was working as an engineer and decides to teach computer science, was a electrician and is now, um, working at TRITech. Um, so they have the skills, they've been in the industry, and they're bringing that into the classroom for those high demand needs, um, that our community needs. Uh, some of the credentials or certifications that students can earn when they're in a CTE course are listed here, um, different ones for the different, um, groups. And then I also just want to highlight that these are all of the college credits that students can earn and the courses that they're aligned with. So Annie, if she wants to, could get up to nine credits for Teaching Academy. I think it's an articulation with Central.
It is.
Um, and that's an option that she has for that course, which is really exciting. Um, I know, um, my own student got a letter from Central saying, you qualify. It was a big deal to get that letter and know, like, I'm in a college-level course. And for some students, that, that's like a gateway to say, I can, I can do it. Um, and that's really important with CTE courses. Um, as we mentioned, um, we have some goals to do, uh, we want to better communicate. These are pretty awesome programs. These, um, we were talking a little bit about funding and enrollment, we have greenhouses, um, we have state-of-the-art technology, um, and, um, these are exciting courses, and we want to do a little bit better job of communicating that with families, um, of what our high schools are offering and making them aware of some of these programs. Um, so, um, last year, um, CTE did a review, and the feedback was from parents, especially as I didn't know about these programs. So if you have an eighth grader or a ninth grader, you will be getting this in the mail this fall, um, and it's a career and college readiness guide that's customized just for Kennewick School District, with all of the course offerings available at our local high schools. Um, and it breaks down, um, the need in the community, it, it talks about how much money certain, um, careers can make, and all of the training that's available in our local high schools. Um, it'll be available at conferences, it'll be in Spanish as well, um, but we're excited to get, it's gonna ma-, get mailed out to homes, um, and we're just excited to be upping our communication of these opportunities that students have.
Alyssa, which grades did you say you're?
Eighth and ninth. There will be extra copies in the schools as well, but we really want to target those grade levels with the mailer. Uh, another, um, highlight of our CTE program is our partnership with GISA, um, for two reasons. There is a worksite learning internship opportunity. We have three students working for GISA right now, earning credit and, um, being paid and getting an excellent internship with GISA. And then, um, the affinity card partnership is also a great opportunity to have some funds come back to our schools as well. Um, this last year, it was just over $60,000 back to our three big high schools. Um, I mentioned that part of our CTE program is, um, giving students an opportunity to grow their leadership and employability skills. Um, and some highlights from this last year are robotics teams from both Kamikin and Kennewick, and we also had students in agriculture, DECA, FCCLA, all qualified for nationals as well. See, um, we talked a little bit about Teaching Bridge and Teaching Academy, and I am excited to share, there's a new partnership growing with, um, Columbia Basin College that's similar to our teaching partnership with WC Tri-Cities. Um, but our ag advisory committee for CTE, we're meeting, um, regularly throughout the year with different industries, and our ag committee has said, we, we need people, we need people who are ready to work for us. Um, and so through that dialogue with our, um, advisory, um, our Director of Career and College Readiness is working with CBC to come up with a cultivating futures program, where we're gonna have students be able to attend CBC for a week-long summer certification program at CBC and get certified, be ready to work, and be exposed to different agricultural programs at CBC, um, and how that industry is growing locally. Um, so we're really excited to be growing that one, more to come on that, that'll be new this year. And finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about worksite learning. Um, through CTE, we've got some opportunities to earn credit and be paid for worksite learning. We also have paid work experience that we talked a little bit about last year, they're, they're slightly different. Um, but we, we do have some students in worksite learning where they're going to a job, um, and earning those skills, and also earning some credit for it. Uh, there are some challenges with this program as well. Uh, we would like to grow this and have more students taking advantage of worksite learning, um, but that, it has been challenging to work with employers, and there's some limitations involved with that. Um, so we're continuing to try to grow that program.
Okay. Thank you. And so, um, just on that topic, before we move on, I handed out a couple of things, just informational. So we do, uh, there is a process for, uh, a student to seek a, a work variance as a minor. This is all through LNI rules. Um, and so I just thought it might be helpful on, as we talk about this more for, for the board, to have this memo that goes out. There's a special variance that's available, uh, that a school district has to seek approval for, um, if, uh, that would allow a 16- or 17-year-old minor to work up to 28 hours per week with six-hour shifts during the school week. And, and so there's a lot, there's limitations. On the second page of this multi-page handout, it shows you the limitations that are currently in place, um, in terms of when minors can work and, um, you know, how many hours a week they can work and that kind of a thing. So, um, there's just different rules that are in place, and I know that this is an area of interest and, and, um, with our legislators, and looking at if we want to provide more kind of real-life, uh, relevant internship opportunities for students or work-based learning opportunities for students, are there too many barriers in place? Um, I think is the question for, on the employer's side, um, or any, you know, concerns, restrictions on school district sides, it just makes it hard to do. So this is just information, because it's tied to what we were just talking about.
Yeah, and I, looking at this, you know, we talk about internships and stuff like that, you know, I look at my son, who's on his second year at TRITech for, uh, uh, working on engines, and, you know, he can't, can't get a job anywhere. He just turned 18, so now we're putting resumes out. But, you know, last year, he couldn't do anything, the tire guys, they said, look, we'd love to have him, but we can't, we can't hire. And so we just, we've got to find a way to get these kids who are really doing the hands-on stuff, you know? OSHA regulations, we just go on and on and on and on. So we've got to find a way to get, get past these barriers, it's just, it's, it's too much. And it's, and we're, we're hampering these kids' ability to go learn something. If you want to go work at Taco Bell, it's not a problem, but that's not a career path. You know, I'll stop.
Yeah, no, that's good. So I just wanted to kind of give you all the current what is, because I know it's an area of interest. Okay, so that brings us to our last related topic for this particular presentation, which is that feasibility study, uh, to look at, are there ways we can provide more opportunities for students to earn credit during the day, um, engage in these high school and beyond plan activities, uh, at school? They really don't have any dedicated time, uh, to do it right now in their schedule, there's not a class, although definitely in CTE courses and in other courses, it is being utilized, but there's not, you know, a, a, a class on high school and beyond or something like that. And that was something when we were talking about financial literacy last year, one of the ideas explored was should, you know, if we were gonna make a financial literacy graduation requirement, you know, is there some way to package things together differently so kids could work on high school and beyond, computer competency, financial literacy, all these sorts of things that we think are important for, for post-secondary preparation? And that led to, well, really, before we do anything, we should probably look at the high school schedules. So, um, I just wanted, we, we haven't, we don't have any initial finding or anything to bring you tonight, I just want to talk about our overall thinking around a, a timeframe and what we're thinking about, you know, what are all the implications that have to be considered? So, um, I think our plan is this year to really deter, like, think about what are all the possible options, determine the feasibility of those options, because we just have to think about potential bargaining implications, fiscal implications, transportation impacts, all of those kind of things. Um, and then really narrow it down to maybe a couple of feasible options, and then go out and get feedback from staff and family and community. We don't think it's a good idea to put every option out there and have people say, well, we really like this option, and then we come back later and say, well, that's not something that's feasible because of transportation, or we can't afford it, or whatever. So we want to really do the feasibility study piece upfront, narrow the options, and then go out for feedback. So, I mean, I think the, the, the two big ones that we talked about last year was, is there some way to, to create a seven-period day by adding some time into the school day? Or is there, um, a way to do a trimester schedule? Um, we know neighboring districts have done a trimester schedule, there's pros and cons to all of these. Um, these two ideas were looked at in the 18, 19 school year. So, um, it was in about the spring of 2019, um, that a, a board presentation was done focusing on these two particular options, and a determination was made to, um, stay with current. I just share that for your information, because everybody wasn't, I don't know if anybody was on the board. Yeah, but, um, but we're, you know, we're gonna look at it again in earnest. And then there's also things that, like, used to be in place, like navigation, uh, which was a dedicated kind of advisory time at the high schools where some of the high school and beyond activities occurred, but it was in place before we had school links. And so there's quite a bit of variability across the system in terms of how that time was used. Um, and there's pros and cons to that model, too. We actually went away from that, uh, model, uh, in, in the last contract negotiations. So there's lots of things that we'll look at, and, um, I, I, our, our thinking would be that we would bring a, a, a recommendation, uh, back to the board some point this year about, like, these are maybe two, you, we looked at all of these options, these are the two that we think have some merit, and go and get some feedback. Uh, and then, you know, we just have to keep in mind, typically, any change is gonna come with, uh, with an expense, right? And so that's something to keep in mind, and change doesn't happen overnight, as we know in big, large systems. And there might be things that are contractual that would need to be looked at, um, when the, when the next, um, teacher contract is open. So we think we can tee it up really well for, it would probably be, really do the research and development this year, uh, and then probably a year of any kind of planning before it got implemented. And as you know, when it comes to graduation requirements, all of those things, you, I know that you see, because it is huge, especially even if you're just doing it in a district, uh, these things don't happen overnight. There's a lot of moving parts and things to think about. So I just share that, because I want to make sure we're on the same page of, we don't think that there would be some new thing implemented for next year. Uh, we're doing the work now to tee it up, to implement potentially in two or more years.
When do contract negotiations come in?
Our current, uh, teacher contract is good through 20, it expires in 2026.
Spring of 2026? Or is it run on the school year or is it calendar year?
Uh, school year.
Okay, so spring of 2026, you would renegotiate?
Yeah, we actually, well, I mean, we start before then, but yes, the current contract ex-, would e-, expire at the end of the school year in 2026. So we would need to have a new contract ready to go for the 26, 27 school year.
Okay.
And that kind of lines up well with levy as well, because some of this, if it, if, if any of these options came with a significant expense, it might need to be levy-funded. And so, knowing it would be good, because then you can start planning and talking about, hey, you know, this is what the levy could help support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to be clear, you, you, you don't need our, you're not asking for our permission, you're, you're, you're just, you guys are going to look into these things.
You gave me permission last year.
Yes, yes, okay, yeah.
We asked her to do that.
I'm just making sure that, that we can have a thing to do, I'd like, I think we're all.
No, you know, this is just an update, there's no vote required or anything.
Okay, so, so you are looking into these things and then?
Yeah, and not just those two, but this is a big piece of work on our strategic plan for this year.
And Tracy, I think you've done a great job of explaining a lot of the reasons why we're looking at this, but I think one of the things that we all understand, but that just hasn't been called out specifically, is that with the new graduation requirements and with the way our high school day is currently organized, there is no room at all whatsoever for a kid to have, you know, heaven forbid, some sort of a medical condition that precludes them from attending school and have, they have to redo classes. You, you just cannot have any life event that happens, there's no wiggle room and still graduate on time. So that's really one of the big reasons for looking at this, is we don't have any space in our schedule to get those credits.
Yeah, so, it, it just stating the obvious, but we have a six-period day, and there's four years of high school, and there's 24 credits required. And, uh, and we don't have a financial literacy requirement right now, right? We were kind of looking at that last year. Uh, we do have a, a competency credit for, um, computer, um, it's not for computer applica- computer competency. Um, there, it, there are a couple, there's a little bit of flexibility for unusual circumstances or student circumstances to waive to electives, um, but there's not wiggle room, like, if you don't pass 10th grade English, you have to earn that credit back. We do have some credit recovery and things like that, but there's just not a, a, a ton of wiggle room. And so as we think about, in addition to focusing on all the credit requirements and the academic pieces, how do you weave in all of this other, like, real-life learning, um, planning for high, planning for beyond high school, things like financial literacy, they have to fit somewhere. And so it's a matter of how do we maybe reorganize things or expand opportunities to bring in some of this other work? Yeah. So just a little bit of an update of what we're doing and where we're headed.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pierce? All right, we are moving, you know, we have no unfinished business, so we're moving on to new business. We'll go through a handful of policies. First up, policy 9325, school facilities, advertising on district property, um, for first reading, Dr. Pierce. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, this is a, a brand-new policy that is a WASDAM model policy that is not currently in our district policy series. The WASDAM model policy's got a different number, but the wording is pretty much verbatim. It is a, it's like in their optional series, I can't remember the right terminology right now. It's not an essential policy, but it's like an encouraged or discretionary policy. What this policy would do would be, would clarify what kind of advertising is allowed and what the limitations are. As we went through both the WASDAM model policy and procedure, which was included in the board materials, this is reflective of our current practice. However, we've had inquiries before from companies who are interested in, like, having a brand, you know, paying for a scoreboard and having it branded. And as we considered that, we look in our policy, we don't find any guidance that would either prohibit it or allow it. And so in doing some research, we found that there is a WASDAM model policy that speaks to that. And so I think that kind of the big, the big reason why we're bringing this to you tonight is there's some wording in here that says that, like, sale of advertising space has to be handled through an open competitive process and be approved. So if we wanted to put out a bid for, hey, who wants to help brand a scoreboard, a new scoreboard for Lamson and pay some money or something like that, we could now do that through this policy. So that's really the purpose of us bringing it to you tonight. You see the procedure?
Do we plan on doing that?
Well, we've had, like I said, we've had inquiries and it's like, well, it sounds like a good idea, but we, you know, how, if, like, what process do you use? Because if you say yes to one company and then the next, the next week, another company says, hey, wait, I wanted to potentially have that opportunity, now it's clarified, it goes through a bid process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess my question was, do we plan on actually, like, reaching out or publicizing that, like, hey, we're, we have opportunities?
Yeah, we've got a couple of thoughts for doing that for some scoreboards and so forth at, at Lamson, for example.
Let's do all of them.
Let's expand that more. I mean, like, the more things.
Someone pay for all the.
We'll have branded, branded projectors.
My question is, I didn't see it in the policy and maybe I just don't, maybe it's in there and I just don't see it. But as far as the bid process, do we, how much control do we have over? I mean, we can put standards in there and say that we will sell to this type of a company. I'm just trying to think of.
Absolutely. And so the procedure.
Some company comes that we don't align with.
Exactly. And it, the procedure, I'll just bring it up real quick, is really specific about that. It includes all the limitations of what isn't acceptable. So you can see advertising for cigarettes, cigars, smoking, tobacco. I mean, there's lots of limitations here and so it's real clear that, yeah.
We're also relying on you to, because you're the one who actually approves it, right?
Right.
You or somebody appointed by you. So we're relying on you to know the board.
Right. But there's lots of limitations, so it's clear to people.
It's not a situation where someone bids just because they're the best bidder. We have to accept that.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion for first and second reading if there's no other questions.
I will, I'm, okay, I always need some help. I move that we approve policy 9325 as presented. Oh, school facilities as presented.
For first and.
First and second reading, right?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Patty, if you will offer the roll call vote, please.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't.
Okay, Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Gluthill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yeah.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
All right, policy 9325 passes for zero.
Trying to help you, Tom, but I don't know if I am.
Next up is policy 3206, students. Sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of students prohibited for first and possibly second reading. Dr. Brillhart?
I've been waiting to put you through the ringer, so we're excited about it.
All right, we're ready. We did save the best for last, so just want to put that out there. So OSPI sent us notification that through their Office of Equity and Civil Rights, there are updates and items that we need to make sure that we are in compliance on. And so some of those items that we have to report to OSPI here in about the next couple of weeks are some policy items, which of course we will be presenting tonight, some handbook and website updates, making sure, again, we check the boxes and we're in compliance with equity and civil rights, some staff training, and of course, we have to show evidence that we've conducted that thoroughly. And then also designated coordinators, such as myself and BJ Wilson, which is our Title IX coordinator, desperate man, that we've been properly trained as well. So, so one of the items that, of course, this unearthed was the needed update to policy 36, I'm sorry, 3206, and then also policy 5013, which is a mirrored reflection policy that pertains to staff. It's the same topic, it's just pertaining to staff, so don't, don't, don't mind the numbering. So the, the basic updates and the red lines that you see, again, these are all WASDAM models. And to kind of summarize the, the adjustments and some of the changes and some, obviously a lot of the items you haven't read here, is definition and purpose, some tweaks that we've made, as well as investigation and response and also retaliation, staff responsibilities, trainings and notices. Again, you can kind of see a theme of some of the items that we have to obviously report and show compliance with OSPI. So, and again, this, obviously, the 3206 policy pertains to students. And again, the 5013 policy pertains to staffing. But again, they are very, very similar and, again, one's just for professional staff and one's for students, so.
So this has to do with, obviously, hiring, right? And the staff one, not the student one, but the staff one has to do with, like, do the hiring process and are you, you know, so some, I just, I just don't.
We're specifically on.
We're only on students right now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Any questions on 3206?
My only question, like, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to decide, like, when, when the student one would, would be happening, when would it be applicable? Can you give me a situation of, like, where this would apply?
So if a, it could be between, an unfortunate event between two students, it could be an event between a staff member and a student. And so, so basically what this policy is saying, that again, we, we do have procedures for students to report and then obviously obligations from the district of what we need to do to make sure obviously we fulfill our obligations from a federal standpoint and also from a state standpoint. Did I answer?
Yeah, yeah, you did. I'm just thinking it through. Yes, you did. Thank you.
Any other questions for policy 3206, students? There are no questions regarding that policy. I'll entertain a motion.
The policy is just called students.
Well, students and then sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of students prohibited.
The 3,000 series is called students, so everything in the 3,000 series.
That's why I was asking, because I was going to take a second attempt.
I figured, so you're.
Didn't think that that could be what it's called. Okay, I move. That we approve. I move that we approve policy 3206, students, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of students prohibited for first and second reading.
All right, we have no other questions. We will call for the roll call vote. So we'll start with Annie.
Okay, Annie Malteath? Yes. Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Gluthill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so policy 3206, sex discrimination, sex-based harassment of students prohibited, passes four to zero, and we will move on to policy 5013.
Yes. Yes, sir. Not to repeat myself too much, but again, very, very similar in language and updates for the WASDAM model. Again, this pertains to professional personnel staff. But again, to kind of jump forward, of course, a lot of this has to do with hiring practices as well, and obviously, we would not discriminate based upon those definitions. So, but, but again, it could also be, again, a situation between two staff members that obviously we would be obligated to make sure that we, we would investigate and, and take care of that different process, but of course, we would do the same thing.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so in regards to our hiring practices, and this might be more for Dr. Pierce, I'm not sure, but for me, it feels like, like, I would like to see us hire, honestly, like, just the, the very first application process, have no name, no gender, no, no, you know, race on it and just kind of so we can, so we can really look at the person. Is that possible to do that through the first phase of an app, of a hiring process? Just to temporarily remove, I know maybe we have to report them to state later, but at least for our side?
Well, I'll, I'll chime in. So, so we're doing some, we've got some hiring committees, sorry, happening this, this week. And, you know, the processes that people, people apply, they submit a resume, they, there's, there's no, we don't ask them any questions about their, about their sex or about their race or anything like that. I'm trying to remember if on the actual employment application, there's any of that information. And that's by design, so there's no, you know, possibility, right, of somebody discriminating.
Right.
But like name, we have to get somebody's name so we know who to contact and that kind of thing.
Yes, I'm not saying we don't.
Right. And so sometimes, like, as an employer, right, you could, you can, you can infer what, what sex somebody is likely based on the letter that they wrote or something like that. But you, all this is really, that, all of this is saying is that as an employer, and this is federal law, you can't discriminate. You can't say, as I'm, as I'm sorting out applicants, I'm only going to interview the male applicants and not the female applicants or who I think, you can't do that. It's illegal. So this is just saying that, like, you're not going to do that, which we don't. And then, yes, once we bring in that pool of qualified applicants who, who we feel have the qualifications and we interview them, we're going to hire the best person for the job.
Period, story, regardless of the other stuff. We're just going to get the best person. That's, that's all, that's all I want. I just want to make sure we have a process that we're thinking it through, that we are, we're looking for the best process. It's not a, we're not hiring to, to look like the community, we're not hiring for a DEI, we're hiring to have, for excellence. We're hiring to find the best people, period, in a story. And because the best people are, that's going to translate to the best job, the best for our students, the best for our staff. That's all, that's all I'm emphasizing.
And I think this policy is just saying, we're not going to discriminate against people for, you know, based on their gender or based on their, whether or not they're pregnant or any of those kind of things.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? I mean, the only comment I would make is this is another example of a partisan bill passed that we now have to update policies on, so it is what it is. Anybody? No other questions, we'll entertain a motion. Brittany, you going to go three for three tonight or?
Sure, Brittany.
Got it.
You go look at mine.
Okay, I move that we approve policy 5013, personnel, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment of district staff prohibited for approval for first, for first and second reading.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Patty, I will call for the roll call vote.
Annie Malteath?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Ms. Gluthill?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brillhart. So policy 5013, sex discrimination, sex-based harassment of district staff prohibited, passes for zero. Next up on the agenda is our next meeting agenda. So we are starting with a study session to discuss bond refunding process and planning, which will then lead into our business meeting to discuss legislative priorities, Children's Reading Foundation of the Mid-Columbia, choice schools and programs, as well as policy updates. Anything else from the board for that meeting? If not, as always, if you have something that comes up, let Dr. Pierce and I know. We have no other businesses authorized by law, so we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.